Okay, we'll get started with the pre-meeting. So industrial pretreatment program is on the list, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The need to look at this program and the benchmarks that are associated with this generally will happen during the time in which we see regulations change because of EPA directives and so on. This particular request for your consideration isn't really much different today than it was over the last six or so times in the last 30 years where we've had to make some changes. If it's okay with you and the council, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to invite Andrew up to kind of walk us through what some of these issues are, what the pretreatment program is all about anyway, and let you know why we need some of these changes to be considered in ordinance here in the very near future, if that's okay.
Okay. Mr. Beamer?
Like Carter mentioned, we've changed these local limits several times over the last 30 years since the mid 1980s. And this recent modification is a requirement of the renewal of our discharge permit from the wastewater stream plant that was back in 2018. But the speed of government is moving, so we're now bringing these forward to you in 2020. And to be honest with you, the manufacturing processes have certainly changed over the last several years that have naturally reduced the discharge of metals to our wastewater stream. So we've taken a look at that with consultation from EPA. You'll see that a couple of them have actually gone up. We can accept more pollutants, but several have gone down. But in reality, we don't even come close to detecting even these revised limits. So there will be no issues with meeting these revised limits as proposed, so.
Councilman Cathy.
What I'm interested in is I noticed it was, what, arsenic and cadmium that went up?
Correct.
Or was it chromium?
I don't have my glasses, but I think...
Anyhow.
It's arsenic and cadmium.
Okay. I guess my concern is, how does Fish and Game feel about that? And how does that ultimately affect then our removal of the North Platte from whatever the endangered waterway that it used to be and stuff? And should, since everybody was meeting it, should we leave it at that lower limit?
Mayor, council, that's an excellent question. From my perspective, if we raise it, we can bring in some other industries that might discharge this type of metal contamination and allow them to operate in our community. And certainly, the discharge permit is reviewed by Game and Fish and all those entities during this process. So they're well aware. And the river was actually, selenium was the contaminant of choice. And you'll see there that it actually is going down by over half, so.
I noticed that, yes. But I was just curious about the arsenic and the cadmium.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. And particularly since Fish and Game is aware of it and they're not concerned about it, so.
And again, you know, we're talking about milligrams per liter here, which is parts per million. So we're talking about very, very small quantities.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Mr. Manager?
So, Mr. Mayor, we'll go ahead and prepare that ordinance through your formal consideration and move forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Then we'll move on to agenda review. Mr. City Manager, anything on the agenda we need to...
Mr. Mayor, I think for your interest and the interest of the council, we have been having some conversations with some of our local advocates as it relates to the animal care and control revisions that we've discussed, that we discussed in last week's work session. And the Attorney's Office did a really nice job of putting together the proposed revisions and so forth, consistent with the direction that you gave last week. You should have received that packet, excuse me, that memo in your packet over the weekend. And you'll notice that we did include some updated language with respect to the concept of attacking with regard to the inclusion of the feral dog concept, as well as, you know, dealing with feral cats. We have included the language in the revision dealing with the 10 hours of tethering. But we also included the concept that indeed, that tethering and that calculation of time is really within any 10-hour block of time. So it doesn't have to be a consistent amount of 10 hours within a 24-hour period of time, but rather any 10 hours, any given 10 hours. We also dealt with the temperature thresholds that were discussed last week, and you can see that 70 degrees is in there. And we also, of course, clarified what it is on page seven pertaining to the prohibition of enticing non-domesticated animals with respect to feeding and other practices. And again, you'll see that feral cats are in there, feral dogs. And then, of course, we included turkeys pursuant to the conversation that Game and Fish had with us as well. So we tried to capture all the changes and revisions that we talked about. It's a lot of language and a lot of nuance and so on. I suspect that despite our inclusion of some of our advocate groups and so on, you'll likely hear some conversation and commentary that would suggest that they're still not happy with some of the provisions. And I suspect that the tethering will be chief among them. But nonetheless, if there's things that council would like to see different and so on, that's exactly why we have the readings, and we're happy to make whatever revisions council would like to see happen. I do have the chief here with us to kind of walk us through some of the technical enforcement concerns that they might have pertaining to whatever ideas might come forward. But I suspect that'll be one of the larger conversation items this evening.
Okay. Anybody else with anything for the agenda tonight? All right. Well, I guess we'll take a break until 6 o'clock. Okay, we're gonna get started here. So before we begin this evening, I'd like to remind everyone to silence their cellphones at this time. And now call the July 21st, 2020 regular council meeting to order. The Chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, excuse the absence of Vice Mayor Luce.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Pacheco, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Cathy. Okay, Cathy. Any abstentions or nay votes? All voting aye?
Aye.
Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
Council meetings are also televised and can be viewed on cable channel 192. Anybody want to... Lieutenant Dan, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to approve, by minute action, the minutes of the July 7th, 2020 regular council meeting is published in the Casper Star Tribune on July 14th, 2020.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Bates. Any amendments? Any abstention or nay votes? All voting aye?
Aye.
Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve, by minute action, the minutes of the July 7th, 2020 executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Cathy, seconded by Councilman Hopkins. Any amendments? Any abstention or nay votes? All voting aye?
Aye.
Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve, by minute action, the July 21st, 2020 bills and claims is audited by City Manager Napier.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Johnson.
Second.
Second by Councilman Pacheco. Any abstentions? Or nay votes? All voting aye?
Aye.
Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
Now is the time we invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak with the council to come forward. As stated on the first page of the agenda, we ask the following. Please state your name and address. Direct all questions and comments to the mayor and the mayor only. No personal attacks on staff or council will be tolerated. Council will not respond to personnel matters. These will be referred to our city manager. Questions posed by speakers may or may not be responded to by council members. Presentations be limited to five minutes, and duplication of speakers will not be allowed, nor will time extensions be permitted. So is there anybody that wants to come up and talk to council?
Thank you, Mayor Freel. Bob King, 3551 East 21st Street. I've observed through several of your meetings that you have people come forward with you to present facts or opinions. I intend to do both, primarily facts relating to an issue that came up at your July 14th work session, specifically on your discussions of the AMICO reuse agreement, AMICO Joint Powers Board reuse agreement, where you were discussing the board member terms. But my issues don't relate specifically to that topic. However, the comment was made during that discussion, and this is a quote, "The reason we have a golf course there instead of a baseball complex is because old white guys made this decision, and old white guys golf. And they sold it to us because it was going to make money." Mr. Mayor, I've got three issues on that that I'd like to briefly discuss. One is that in the original 1998 Community Facilitation Initiative proposal that came out in early 201998, there was no golf course as part of the final recommendation from that committee. The idea of a golf course came into the picture and was introduced by AMICO later in 1998 as part of their discussions on the consent decree with the courts and the DEQ, and also with the joint powers agreement between the city and the county in AMICO. And what AMICO was proposing was a site that would facilitate their remediation efforts, help facilitate their remediation efforts with wells and with the water usage, the soil and the water management and monitoring, and the ongoing cleanup that would go on out there. And that ultimately was agreed on in necessary documents, and AMICO paid for the golf course at that time. The course was intended to be part of a business park and to help facilitate and encourage private development on the lands that would be available, what were called the opportunity areas, where entities, whether the private industry or government entities, would come in and lease the land at market rates. And the golf course was intended to be part of that business park. And again, the operating funds to maintain that course would come from the revenues generated by the golf course, come from revenues received from leasing the lands, and also possibly the, some of the funds that were included in the ultimate reuse agreement, the building and maintenance funds and other funds over about a 12-year period that were negotiated in the agreements. Some of the advocates of the project from early on, one of the, what I would view as the primary advocate was Jane Sullivan, our first lady, former first lady. She, in my opinion, got the whole process started and was a proponent of the development as it moved along throughout the next several years. Another individual who I view was instrumental in the getting the project to a successful conclusion was Maggie Murdock with the University of Wyoming Outreach in Casper. She also served on the original Community Facilitation Initiative Committee, and she also served on the original AMICO reuse agreement Joint Powers Board, which was formed in 1998, late 1998. Third individual who I think was very instrumental in moving the project ahead was the late Kathleen Dixon, who was a city council. She was your mayor for a couple of times during that time period, and she also was a member of the original AMICO reuse agreement Joint Powers Board. And this is my opinion. I felt like during the whole process from 1998 through the construction start in 2002, we had enthusiastic support from several years of city councils, the county commission, CADA. We also had, I think, a very enthusiastic support from the previous city manager, Tom Forglan, who was instrumental in promoting and advocating that the course, which was originally proposed for a nine-hole course, Mr. Forglan was adamant that if the course is going to be built, it should be expanded to 18 holes. So he was very much an advocate of it. And with that, I guess, and with those facts and those opinions, I would say that the statement that was made at your work session, I think, was wrong. It was misleading, and I think it was disingenuous to all of the people who participated in the ultimate successful reuse of that property and turning it back into a productive part of our community. And with that, I'll close.
All right. Thank you, Mr. King. Any comments? Okay, thank you.
Mr. King, if I may, I won't take back entirely what my statement, but I do appreciate that tremendous work has been done to rehabilitate that property and that it is a shining example of what can be done with an industrial property. And I realize that the efforts were tireless on the part of many people like yourself. So that, it would be nothing but a fenced-off plot of land in the middle of our city had you and others not stepped forward to do that.
Thank you. And with that, I'll supplement my comments. When I was on that original board, I was 48 years old, and I think I was one of the older members of the group. So I questioned where the impression that it was old white men that were involved in it, and we just got a golf course for our own personal use. I think that was an erroneous perception, so thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Linda Terrell, 2250 East 3rd Street. We're here with regard to the amendment to the animal ordinance. Is this the time for us to speak about that, or...
Actually, we'll probably have you, if you want to talk about that, it'd probably be best to wait until we get to that item.
Get to that?
Yep.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else here to speak to council? Okay, with no one else to speak to council, please read the consent agenda item or titles. Oh, do we? Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Bob.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members. I just talked to Liz Becker out in the hallway, and I was under the assumption that, from a notice that I had to speak about a plat that we're working on, and I just wanted to verify. She said it wasn't until the 4th of August, and I just wanted to verify that I don't need to be here if I leave. She said really didn't need to speak until the August 4th meeting. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right. Anybody else that wants to speak to council? All right. Please read the consent agenda titles.
Item 7A1A, the 2020 NF... Oh, pardon me. Establishing August 4th, 2020 as a public hearing date for the consideration of the following five items. Item 7A1A, the 2020 NFPA 70 National Electrical Code. Item 7A1B, the annexation of plat creating the I edition to the city of Casper and zoning said addition as C3 central business. Item 7A1C, vacating tract G Mesa-Del Sol addition as public parkland and approving the zone change of said parcel from Park Historic to R4 High Density Residential. Item 7A1D, the adoption of fiscal year 2021 budget amendment number one. Item 7A1E, the transfer of ownership of retail liquor license number 26 from Wyoming Novelty Company doing business as TJ's Bar and Grill to Brenton Properties LLC doing business as Frank's Butcher Shop and Liquor, and establishing September 15th, 2020 as a public hearing date for the consideration of the annexation compliance of the I edition and the third reading of the ordinance approving the annexation and zoning of the I edition.
Chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, establish the public hearing dates just read.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Cathy. Any abstention or nay votes? All voting aye?
Aye.
Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
And now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of ordinance, the ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 6.04 Animal Care and Control. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
Your Honor, exhibit, have one exhibit, the Animal Care Control Ordinance, number one, correspondence from John Henley to Casper City Council and Jay Carter-Napier dated July 16th, 2020.
City Managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is the opportunity to entertain public comment with respect to revisions that are being considered for the Animal Care and Control Ordinance. The council did spend some time last week in work session to go over some of these ideas and talk in a little more detail with respect to some of the things that were being changed and why they were being changed and so on. Those topics included certainly the tethering issues and the directives that this ordinance, if passes, would lay out. Indeed, feeding of non-domesticated animals was also discussed at some length, and we have those revisions included in your memo and copy of the ordinance. We also talked about the addition of other things as well that wasn't in the original revision, if you will, including the concept of feral dogs, as well as turkeys being different than regular fowl that might be fed as sort of a hobby. With that, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, tonight's your opportunity to determine whether or not you'd like to formalize those concepts in the revision that you have in front of you. If indeed there are ideas that you'd like to alter or amend, then certainly this is one of three readings where those opportunities will be available to you.
Okay, council, now listen to public comment. Public hearing comments are limited to five minutes, and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. This time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the issues involving the Animal Care and Control Ordinance, please approach the lectern.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name's Justin Binfit. I'm the Wildlife Management Coordinator with the Wyoming Game and Fish Department here in Casper. Of course, I spoke to you, spoke to this council a couple of weeks ago. But I guess I would like to, again, just state the position of my agency regarding this proposed ordinance. The Wyoming Game and Fish Department endorses responsible wildlife feeding bans. We are the ones that, or I should say that I originally proffered the addition of some wildlife species, such as deer and wild turkeys, to be included in addition to the feeding ordinance that was already being proposed. I still stand by that suggestion, I guess. We would still wholeheartedly endorse a feeding ban within city limits. It would address those species in particular and would offer to comprehensively develop a list of species of concern. Those primary species are deer and wild turkey. In addition to that, we support the efforts behind getting some kind of handle on the feral cat issue. I guess prior to that, I wasn't quite aware of the magnitude of the issue that's being dealt with, but feral cats are of increasing concern across the country and really frankly across the world. I have some literature to support some of that about estimates as far as the number of wild birds and mammals that are potentially attributed to feral cats and also endangered species issues that they may affect in places. So the department supports the concerns of Metro and the Police Department regarding trying to do what we can in a socially acceptable and responsible manner to address the feral cat problem and also other issues associated with wildlife feeding. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Councilman Bates?
I have two, if you don't mind me, Mayor. One, you mentioned that you were going to visit with the county commissioners about adopting similar to what we are. Can I ask how that went with them if you were able to visit with them?
Yeah, Councilman Bates, so I did that actually just this afternoon during one of their work sessions. In advance of that, I had been in contact with some members of the Neptreona County Sheriff's Department, and we had to clear up some details as far as what the actual enforcement mechanism would be in place outside of city limits within the county. Based on some conversations we had with the Neptreona County Sheriff's Office, there currently it really isn't support for using deputies to enforce that feeding ban, and that's certainly something that we understand with and respect. And so we are now, I guess, one of the issues that came up in front of the county commission work session today was, and some of you folks may be hearing this for the first time, so I apologize, especially to Chief McFeeters and folks from Metro, as I didn't have a chance to connect with them, but they were looking at some potential via an MOU to explore the use of Metro potentially enforcing that out in the county. Now, whether or not that is going to be deemed acceptable by the folks within the city and Chief McFeeters is not something I've been able to visit with him about. In addition to that, I guess I would submit that if, should something like this were to go through and it was, and we were able to work out the jurisdiction over enforcement and things like that, you know, the Wyoming Game and Fish Department would only be interested in pursuing those cases that we would consider to be of an egregious nature, where we felt like something more than just an educational visit would have to occur, and we would try to still deal with that situation with our personnel to the extent possible.
Okay, thank you for that, and sorry to, I had to kind of spill the beans.
Fair question.
Another question I have is that I have received a couple of times, so with you being Game and Fish... being game and fish, one of the concerns is with not feeding the feral cats. If we did pass that, that they would turn to other wildlife animals, rabbits, squirrels, birds, which they already do, but, and maybe they do those, but also either even more animals than that there. Is that a concern that we need to be aware of before we keep moving forward with this? Is that a concern that you guys would have regarding this?
Well, Councilman Bates, I would say yes, and that's also, it's a somewhat difficult question in terms of we just don't, we're not able to collect data on feral cats and, and to really be able to understand what those potential impacts are to wildlife populations around the city of Casper or within the county. Feral cats can be very hard to get a, a hold on, on their numbers. They tend to be very nocturnal and elusive and solitary in most cases. And so, we, I, I couldn't speculate as to the magnitude of that potential prey shifting that may occur, but is, it is, it's a potential concern. That's no doubt. It's fair to say that our agency takes any matter of, of invasive species very, I guess we take those issues very seriously, whether it's aquatic invasive species or vegetative species like cheat grass and things like that that can disrupt entire ecosystem function, and, and feral cats certainly can play a huge role in disrupting the, the trophic food chain of, of wildlife communities, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak in favor of? Okay, at this time, I would ask those individuals who speak or wish to speak in opposition to the issues involved, involving the Animal Care and Control Ordinance, please approach the lectern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Terrell, again with, at 2250 East Third Street. We do oppose the ban on feeding feral cats. That's a pretty complicated issue. I think we're working together with the, the city and some other organizations to hopefully move forward to present a trap neuter release program to the council at some point. So, we do oppose that. We also have an issue with the tethering, the changing in the tethering law. You've taken out a number of things. Seven things have been taken out of the law that we worked very hard to get passed a little over a year ago. You've taken away the dog is in visual range of a responsible party. The leather, excuse me, the tether is connected to the dog by a well-fitted buckle type collar or body harness made of nylon or leather, not less than one inch in width. The dog is tethered in such a manner as to prevent injury, strangulation, or entanglement. The tether shall combine the dog to the owner's property. The dog has access to water, shelter, and dry ground. The dog is at least six months of age. Puppies shall not be tethered. No dog shall be tethered for more than two hours in a 24-hour period. So, you, you've taken those out and you've changed it back to the 10 hours. Animals may not be tethered longer than 10 hours in a 24-hour period. Not be tethered by a line less than five times their body length as measured from tip of the nose to tip of the tail. Animals may not be tethered on a line that weighs more than one quarter of the animal's body weight. This is your, what you're proposing. And this tether's just be strong enough to restrain, restrain the animal. Our concern is some, a lot of the items you took out are there to protect the animals. That's what animal control and, or, excuse me, animal welfare, animal protection ordinances are for, to be in the best interest of the animal. We started this process in 2017 because of two dogs in Evansville that were tethered 24/7. Reported, numerous people reported them to Metro, and we were consistently told there's nothing we can do. And we were told the ordinance could not be enforced. So, I have a question. I would guess it would be for Metro, but how is it going to be enforced? And how is this in the best interest of the animal to change this tethering law? I think it's just being done for the convenience of the pet owners. There are responsibilities that go along with being a responsible pet owner. There are expenses that go along with being a responsible pet owner, and you have to think about those things before you get a pet. So, there are many other options besides tethering. What tethering can do to an animal, and this comes from the Humane Society, the United States Humane Society.org, intensive confinement or long-term restraint can severely damage their physical and psychological well-being. An otherwise friendly and docile dog, when kept continuously chained or intensely confined, intensively confined in any way, becomes neurotic, unhappy, anxious, and often aggressive. Tethering is a high-risk factor in serious dog bites and attacks. Dogs unable to retreat from perceived or real threats can act out aggressively when approached. Dogs tethered for long periods can become highly aggressive. Dogs feel naturally protective of their territory. When confronted with a perceived threat, they respond according to their fight-or-flight instinct. A tied dog unable to fight, excuse me, unable to take flight resorts to fight, attacking any unfamiliar animal or person who unwittingly wanders into his or her territory. And I know that dog attacks and dog bites have been a, a big issue for the council and for the city of Casper. They do happen. Tethering a dog's not going to make that better. So, that's a, that's probably our biggest concern. It, I, I just, I don't understand how they're going to enforce it. I don't understand why they want to change it. Like I said, it's supposed to be in the best interest of the animal, and the changes you're proposing are not.
Okay. Any questions from council? Councilman Bates?
So, the, is, one of the issues that you have is with the length of the tethering?
Yeah, that was in the original, or that was in the one that we changed. But you still have that. You still have that it may not be tethered on a line less than five times their body weight.
Length of time. Talking about length of time from two hours to ten.
No, no, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about, she's talking about.
Are you asking about two hours to ten?
No.
No, the length of the tethering, because it's actually, it's three times the body length, but then we were looking at, because this has been a concern, there was a concern of mine of walking away, is three times the length of the dog on, or if eight feet is longer. And the reason why is because I have, and I pointed, I sent an email out, I have a Newfoundland, and he is 4.5, he's four and a half feet long. If you go five times his body length, that is 22 and a half feet of rope that I have to, that I would be required to put him on. That's, that's long. And for, if I have him out in the front yard, he's going into the, that will reach to the street, beyond the street, actually. But then, on the other side of the coin, I have a, an obsolazzo, and you do, and she is about yay big. She's not very big, and you do five times. That's, if I remember right, it's only like three, four feet, or three, maybe two or three feet long for her. If I do five times the length of her body, I even think of a little chihuahua, and you do five times the length of that dog, they're, from neck or shoulder harness to the end where they would be tethered, would only be two feet, and even less than that, because you add their body width, then the rope, that's, they, they wouldn't have very much whatsoever room to go around. So, we looked at it as changing it to three feet, that's the length of their body, which would put my dog at 13, I think 13 and a half feet worth of rope. And I have a dog run, so, but I'm just saying, for my size of the yard, a 22-foot rope, and that's just too much. 13 is understandable, but yet, we're adding in the eight feet, minimum of eight feet. So, my obsolazzo would have eight feet to move around with, which for her, would be a lot. And again, I have a dog run, so I'm not worried about it, but I, I, I just wanted to point out that that five times their body length for big dogs, that's unreasonable, and it's coming from having a big dog.
And I, I'm sorry, you're done?
No, go ahead.
Councilman Bates, I understand where you're coming from, and to be honest with you, I'd rather see tethering taken away entirely. I'd rather see it outlawed completely. So, that's my opinion on that, and, and this is what you guys have put in, and, and you're going to have to make that decision as far as what you want to do, and it is going to be different for different dogs, just like if it's, you know, a husky is outside in cold weather is going to do better than a chihuahua. There are always those issues with breeds. But I just believe very strongly that tethering dogs for that long of a period of time is just detrimental to them, and we're supposed to be protecting our animals, not making their life worse.
I would like to make a comment also, if I can. What, everything you've stated is actually an argument against any kind of tethering. What you've stated, these, if they were tethered for a very short period of time, those wouldn't be big issues. But in any animal that's tethered for any serious length of time, too short, too long, it's going to be a major problem. So, your tethering needs to be, for safety, needs to be for very short periods of time.
And I respectfully understand where you guys are coming from regarding that, but also I understand, my wife and I both work, we work eight hours a day. We are blessed to have, that I was able to create a, almost a 40-foot dog run, or maybe a little bit less than that, but a pretty long dog run for my dogs. But knowing other people that don't have that option, that need the option to tether, so that they're not tearing up their own, their house, and worried about that, I, I get the reason for tethering, and I get the reason why we need the change for the length of time, because again, my wife and I work, and my Newfoundland, he's four, and he acts like a two-year-old. We've had many issues of him tearing things up in the house. So, if we didn't have it, we would have to tether him while we're gone. While we're there, he's fine. So, not to argue with you. I'm just pointing out.
But what, I would suggest that you're not blessed to have a run you planned for and prepared for the dog.
You're a responsible pet owner, so.
Which is what we should all be doing. And people that aren't, we're going to be back to, they're going to be chained 24/7 again. We're going to be right back to that because we're going to be told that this 10 hours is not enforceable.
Right.
With these other dogs, we even offered to videotape them for 24-hour periods. We take turns. We had people who weren't willing to help do it, and were told that won't hold up in court either because you can alter it. There was no way to enforce 10 hours of tethering.
So, I think that's.
And dogs are just going to become vicious.
So, I think that's our biggest issue, is, is, they told us before it couldn't be enforced. How is it going to be enforced now? The two dogs that started us on this journey that were tethered 24/7 did become very vicious. You could not approach them, and my understanding is, the lady had to surrender them because they became so vicious. I don't know what happened to the dogs. I mean, I, I mean, it's just, it's very hard on them, very hard on them. And if you're going to have a pet, you need to be a responsible pet owner. You need to do the things that have to be done, and it is expensive sometimes to have a pet. If you're going to have a pet, you need to be prepared for that. And a run is a great option. I have a fenced-in yard. I have a doggy door. If you adopt from the Casper Humane Society, it stipulates in the contract that you have to have a fenced-in yard.
Okay. Councilman Huber, did you have something?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ma'am, I believe that you were speaking earlier, early in your presentation, talking about the type of collars and harnesses or whatever. Did I understand you correctly that the proposed amendments to the ordinance that we're considering would remove those protections for the animals?
Yes. That's what it appears to me, based on what I'm seeing.
Do you happen to know which sections of this proposed amendment, amended ordinance you're talking about there? Because I was, I was looking here, and I couldn't find that in here.
Okay.
And, because I kind of happen to, I think, agree with you that, you know, that you should have, that there should be some restrictions on, on what kind of an appliance you apply to it, an animal, if you're going to tether it or collar it.
You know, I, I printed these off this afternoon, and I don't, I have page numbers, and I have, it's right above, it's on page number, well, nine or 15.
Ma'am, and not to, you know, not to embarrass you, but also not to load too much work on to you. Maybe if you could kind of look through that and then perhaps email that to us.
Sure.
I think I might not be the only one that would like to take a look at what you're saying would be involved as a change there, and compare those side by side, if you could do that.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, do you have something?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Huber, I believe that was in section 210 entitled neglect, that that might have been removed from. And so, if indeed council wants to bring that back, I would assume that that would be the most appropriate section to put it back into as it relates to the tethering discussion specifically. So, that'd be 6.04.210.
Would there be a way that we could just get a copy of what was the, the previous one and current, and we can look at it?
You betcha.
Would that work, Councilman Huber?
Yeah, if it, Mr. City Manager, if it wouldn't be too tough, maybe if we could see a, you know, the old ordinance and then with strikeout and then new proposed language, if that wouldn't be too hard to do, and that would relieve you, ma'am, of having to, to do that for us. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council?
Actually, I have one more, if that's okay.
Okay.
I would agree. In reference to the feral cats, since we are, and we're with, we're part of a group that is actively working on trying to do, set up a TNR here in Casper. I know. I'd like to know if you could perhaps consider tabling the feral cat issue while we, give us time to present that, to prepare something and present that. Because we, we think the feral cats desperately need some control or something needs to be done, but the starvation issue isn't the best.
There'll be a, a point that council can, if they want to make an amendment, they can at that point in time. If one of the members decides they want to table it, they can do it as we get further into this. So, and could I get your name and address?
1600 West Odell.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Bates?
I also want to mention that we have three readings on this. This is the first reading, correct?
That's correct.
So, we still got two more readings that if we do not table it, you still can come back next, two weeks from now and give us that presentation or email it to us so we can view it and then possibly bring it up at a work session, next week's work session briefly. But just to give you, let you know that, we still got two more readings.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other individuals who would like to speak in opposition to the issue? There being no others to speak for or against the issues involving the Animal Care and Control Ordinance, I now declare the public hearing closed. Please read the ordinance by title only.
In ordinance amending, updating and amending various sections of chapter 6.04 of the Casper Municipal Code, Animal Care and Control.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve on first reading the ordinance just read.
Oh, moved.
Moved by Councilman Pacheco, seconded by Councilman Huber. Discussion?
Your Honor.
Councilman Pacheco.
So, and I was just going to bring up the same thing that Councilman Bates had brought up. I'm kind of still, I don't know, maybe somewhat in the middle on this so far and, and trying to digest a lot of it. And so, while the suggestion was made to table it, I, I won't make that suggestion. But there are three readings, which will be several weeks down the road as we go, because we have an interim of a work session. because we have an interim of a work session. And so, my suggestion would be as well, like Councilman Bates said, as I continue to digest it and look at it, that the, well, I hear you, hear what you're saying, to be able to do that. So, with that being said, please send us the information, so we can take that, and we can look at those things. Because I think you make a good case for that, so, thank you. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay, Councilman Huber?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'd just like to agree with Councilman Pacheco. I, I think it, this is important that we try to clean up some of this stuff, but I want to make sure that we don't go in the wrong direction with any of this. But I do believe that we should be moving forward with this, and so that's why I was seconded adopting this tonight. I think we should move forward with it, but I know that we're all going to be paying close attention. And if there are some things that we need to tweak and amend and change, we can do that on the second and even the third amendment, or the third readings. And so, I think we should move forward with this.
Okay, Councilman Johnson?
Thank you. I just want to stand by my opposition to the feral cat, banning feeding of feral cats. I do think that there's other ways that we can look at this, and I would be interested to hear your thoughts, ma'am, and what, what you guys have, because I, I agree. I, I don't think we should be criminalizing and creating crime where there really isn't crime. I think that's far too often the answer to everything, criminalize it, and it really shouldn't be so. I'm going to be voting no on this ordinance.
Any other discussion? Any amendments? All right, any abstention or nay votes?
I'm voting nay, Your Honor.
All voting aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Please record the vote.
Councilman? With Councilmember Johnson voting nay, motion passed.
All right. Please read the ordinance on second reading by title only.
In ordinance approving the vacation of West Eighth Street from South David Street to South Center Street.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve on second reading the ordinance just read.
So moved, second.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Cathy. Council now listen to public comment. Public comments are limited to five minutes. No duplications of speakers will be allowed. Is there anybody here to speak on this matter?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Sean Gustafson, ECS Engineers, 111 West Second Street, Suite 600. I won't take up much of your time, because I think I gave my spiel the last time, but I would just be here to answer any questions on this abandonment that you may have, if there are any.
Any questions from council? Doesn't look like we have any. Thanks, sir. Anybody else here to speak on, for or against? Okay, any discussion? Any amendments? Any abstention or nay votes? All voting aye?
Aye.
Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
Please read the consent resolutions by title only.
Item 10A1, a contract for outside city water with Thomas L. Davenport. Item 10A2, a contract for outside city water with Roger A. and Cheryl Garland. Item 10A3, approving the, an amendment number three to the Amoco Reuse Joint Powers Agreement.
Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the consent resolutions just read.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Cathy, seconded by Councilman Huber. Mr. City Manager, would you like to comment on any of these items?
Mr. Mayor, real quickly, just to let council know that indeed, for those outside-city water agreements, they do include provisions that request annexation upon the council's desire to do so. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, any abstention or nay votes? All voting aye?
Aye.
Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
Please read the consent minute action title.
Authorizing Community Promotions, allocations for our fiscal year 2021.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent minute action agenda item just read.
So moved, second.
Moved by Councilman Pacheco, seconded by Councilman Bates. Any abstention or nay votes? All voting aye?
Aye.
Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
At this time, we ask council members to bring forward relevant concerns or items of interest. Councilman Johnson? Councilman Powell?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yesterday, Walmart and Starbucks instituted a mandatory mask rule. And I know we had many people in our community who were unhappy with that for various reasons, but I appreciate their willingness to respect private property rights and comply with those requirements. We apparently had no incidents of, that involve significant conflict. And that's appreciated, and people showed that we are a community of law-abiding citizens. Thank you.
Councilman Cathy?
Had a water board meeting, had a water board meeting earlier today, and the water plant that services Casper and a lot of the surrounding area right now is operating at 25 million gallons a day. Normally, we only have spikes to that level, but this is becoming pretty consistent for the month of July with the dry hot weather we've been having. So, I thought that was something that those people are doing a fantastic job of getting water to us and maintaining our water levels in our tanks, which basically, most of them are head-based, and their ground level based on elevation of the city. So, water has to be maintained in those to maintain water pressure. And I think they're doing an excellent job of maintaining the water to our water tanks for our distribution. So, I want to commend those people and let people know what a good job and a hard-working job these people are doing. Also, had a chamber meeting today, and they are actually considering going to a scaled-down version, so to speak, of going more to a virtual chamber, and then potentially leasing out their office space. So, that's something that we may see coming forward from the chamber. So, those were two of the biggies that I saw today, and looks like the jail will wind up getting their kitchen renovated. They had some issues there, and when they started tearing up some of the tile, there were some very unsightly creatures in between the tile and the base floor and things. So, they will be spending some funds there to get that back up to snuff and Health Department compliant, so.
All right, thank you. Councilman Hopkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Along with your discussion about the Water Department, I just wanted to give a thank you to the Water Department. We had a little bit of a problem while we were gone over the weekend, and those guys were really on the ball, and they got my water shut off, so I didn't ruin my basement. So, I just appreciate their efforts. The other thing, I've had several people mention to me that, that the Gallus Greenhouse donation of the flowers and a lot of downtown flower parks are really looking cool. So, just thanks to Gallus for helping us out with that. That's it, sir.
Okay, Councilman Bates?
Thank you. There was no Casper Housing Authority this, this week, or the Casper Public Utility Board. Neither of them, we didn't have either of those two. The Health Department Board, we did, they did meet virtual. And really, the, probably the biggest thing that, I have a report on that, is I asked them about the swimming pools. And with the pools that we opened up, and they've been pretty busy from what it looks like. And there has been no health concern or issues that have come from that. So, that is a positive thing with everything that's going on. So, I want to say it was good that we opened that up. That was good for us to do so. And then, I'd just like to send out to those emails that I've been receiving regarding the feral cats. I appreciate every email. I've tried to respond to most of them, but I've, I've had, like probably all of you guys had so many, I haven't been able to respond, but I do appreciate the information that a lot of them have been sending. So, that's it for me.
Councilman Huber?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just like Councilman Powell, I want to compliment all the people around town that are being serious about wearing face coverings and that, those kind of things in public. You know, that shows consideration for not only yourself, but for everybody else. And I think that's a really good thing. I would note that as of this afternoon, now even Donald Trump is advocating wearing facial coverings, as well as social distancing. At his briefing this afternoon on the radio, they, they said now even, he's advocating social, or, excuse me, face masks. Also, Mr. Mayor, I, I think that you are probably acquainted with retired Casper Police Officer Jim Higday, whose obituary notice was in the paper today. He was a really great guy, and a really, really fine asset to the Casper Police Department, and a good ambassador for the city and for the police department in his many years of working there. And I would be remiss if I didn't remember him to the council, because he, he was just, in my experience dealing with him, a real professional police officer, and a very, very nice man to deal with.
Thank you. Councilman Pacheco?
That's it tonight, thank you.
All right, the only two things I'll, I'll add to what you guys have said is that, first of all, on the face mask, I just want to remind people that when you go to the, some of these stores, whether it's Home Depot, Walmart, Target, whoever that is requiring face mask on, don't be mad at the people at the door, and don't take it out on the Walmart greeter that's trying to say hello to you, because he's telling you to wear a mask. These are things that are made at a corporate level, not local level. And so, decisions that are being made in New York City are affecting us here. And so, the, the workers that are greeting you, don't, don't be angry at them. On a different note, with talking about Officer Higday, I do believe in, maybe the chief can correct me if I'm wrong, but we were looking at, there was this suggestion made this week that officers, fallen officers or retired officers, maybe put on the, their obituaries would be put onto the PD's Facebook page. I don't know if that transpired or not, but maybe the chief could answer that for us. But I think that's a good idea, and I agree with what Councilman Huber said. There's a lot of good officers that put a lot of good time, and when they pass, it's nice to remember them.
I'm not sure if that was a question, Your Honor.
Yeah.
I'll provide a response nonetheless. We, on the, within hours of being notified of that, we put it on our Facebook page already.
Yep, and I appreciate that. I, you know, as I just said, you know, there's a lot of officers that have done their time, and when they pass, it's nice to remember them for the hard work they did, they did for many of years, so.
Mayor, are you anxious to join that?
No, no. Lieutenant Dunn, this might, you know, he might be looking forward to it, but not me, so. Okay, the next meeting of the City Council will be a work session to be held at 4:30 PM Tuesday, July 28th, 2020, in the council chambers. And a regular council meeting will be held at 6 PM Tuesday, August 4th, 2020, in the council chambers. Notice of an executive session to take place on, at this date and during this meeting was given. We have a matter to discuss regarding personnel. Therefore, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session, and at the conclusion of that executive session, reconvene this regular meeting solely for the purposes of adjournment of this regular meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Cathy?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bates. There being a majority of members present, and a motion to adjourn into executive sessioning, session, and having been moved and seconded, and that motion requiring a two-thirds majority of the council present, any abstentions or nay votes? All voting aye?
Aye.
Please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passed.
The greater than two-thirds majority of the council present voted in favor of the motion, we are hereby adjourned to an executive session.